Eastside. Thank you. Our Chair Shonda LeBeuf had a back injury earlier today, so she won't be joining us. So I will be serving as the Chair this evening. And again, welcome everybody to our commission meeting. Let's go ahead and do the roll call to start.
Shonda LeBeuf. Dennis Alexander.
Here.
Ramona Alada Reid. Tiffany Meyer.
Here.
Ray Reardon.
Here.
Joan Castella.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. All right. First item, I mean, or third item after roll call is review agenda. If there are any items that arose after the seventy-two hour posting deadline. This is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to add an item to the agenda. And a two-thirds majority vote is required to do so. Does anybody have anything that they would like to add to the agenda this evening? Okay, I, I not, I guess I do, not an addition necessarily. It was originally supposed to be, I think, enveloped in with the Neighborhood Watch Program. But that was to have a discussion about starting a cert program in the city of Seaside. I was the one that wanted to put that on the agenda, but, but I, I don't want to do so anymore. Based on some conversations, recent conversations that I had with the Fire Chief and with the a retired firefighter from the city of Monterey who runs the trainings through sponsored by FEMA. But I would like it just if to ask that we add the ability for me to do an update on that. So then that's all I want to do is just, just an update and I'll answer any questions based on update, but, but not to, not to ask for a discussion. To start a program through the NIC because I found, the reason is because I found out that it wouldn't be the appropriate channel. It's a national organization that would have to be run through a first responding organization, which would be the Police Department or Fire Department. And that's the basis right there. But I would be, if we, if we do, if we, if we do add it with a vote, I would like to just answer any questions on that basis. So that would be my proposal. And let's go ahead and take a vote on that. If we could just, under Neighborhood Watch, add that I just do an update on, on the cert. Information I found out about. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, item number four would be public comments. Members of the public wishing to address the commission on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda. May do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. And for the public record, please state your name. And I'd like just, I'd like to just add that based on our commission training that we had a few, few weeks ago with the city attorney and the city clerk. Remember that public comment is not a conversation. If, if the public would like to get some answers, we could get back to you hopefully with to you later through city staff. But this period is not a conversation between the commission and the public. So public comment is open.
Hi, my name is Linda Cunningham. I am on the homelessness committee, but I'm just here as a resident of Seaside. And I wanted to nominate my neighbor's house at twenty forty Waring Street between Ord Grove and Military for House of the Month. Last year, she took out all that old landscaping, had beautiful artificial grass put in and, and fresh landscaping. And I wanted to nominate twenty forty Waring. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Seeing no more present, let me ask Jackie, are there any, are there, is there anyone who is on Zoom that would like to speak on the public comments?
I did not show any hands.
Okay, thank you. Let's do one last, one last opportunity. Public comment is still open. No? Okay, public comment is closed. Okay, ma'am, one more time. Sorry, what is your name?
Linda.
Linda, okay. Linda, let me just quickly tell you about the way that we operate the House of the Month. We've got twelve different sections of this neighborhood of the city and each month a, a section is chosen. So I don't know what month exactly it is that, that the way that, that block of the Waring is, but that person will take, you know, we'll, we'll go around that month. And if that's whoever's here tonight, if that is within that, that person's jurisdiction who has taken on that neighborhood for the House of the Month, then I'm sure they'll probably be looking at it. Okay, thank you. And tell your neighbor, think, to thank her for the, all the work she's put into it.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go on to business items. Item five A would be to consider the August twenty twenty-three House of the Month. And this was my responsibility this past month. And this was in the sixteen, seventeen, hundred block between LaSalle and San Pablo. And, you know, and from Notre Bena down to, to down to Fremont. So I'll go ahead and pass these around. Let's take a look, or does everybody want to come over here and take a look? I have to say, my wife was with me. She helped me. So if you don't like the choices, we'll bring her. No. No, that was part of their house. This one here? That is gravel, yes. I think it's underneath it. So far, we've got nominations for seventeen seventy-eight Laguna and sixteen sixty-seven Laguna. And this is the top, and there were a lot of houses, but you know, I can't bring back thirty different. You know, and so then we all, we all experienced that. We want to try and narrow it down to about six or eight. Anybody else still want to nominate one? They're all kind of green color. I don't know. I'm a Packer fan. I didn't get close to the sea, but you know, either they use a lot of water or it is. Oh, is it underneath another one?
For me, I think seventeen seventy-eight was gonna be my number one, this would be my number two.
Okay, so we have a nomination for seventeen seventy-eight Laguna and for sixteen ninety-two San Lucas. Which one, this one here? Yeah, I didn't get out and look. It was kind of hard. We kind of drove by, stopped it, you know, and looked at it to try. Wasn't really able to see. That's artificial. Or this one? Okay, so you don't want to, you no longer want to nominate this one or whoever? Do you still want to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, well, if there's other, is there another nomination for first place? Oh, did you? I'm sorry, did you say that? Seventeen ten Laguna. Okay, so let's, we've got nominations for, for first place as seventeen seventy-eight Laguna, sixteen ninety-two San Lucas and seventeen ten Laguna. So let's start with the first one, seventeen seventy Laguna. If you're in favor of that one as, as number one, say aye.
Aye.
Sixteen ninety-two San Lucas. Anyone, for those who want to nominate that one is first place, say aye. Was that three?
One, two.
I said.
Three.
Okay, three. And seventeen ten Laguna. Always for that being first place, say aye. Okay, well, it looks like it's yeah, it looks like it's going to be sixteen ninety-two San Lucas for first place, Jackie? And then the runner up. Runner up, what do we always, runner up is always just the second go getter, right? Okay, and the runner up is seventeen seventy Laguna. So again, the winner sixteen ninety-two San Lucas and the runner up seventeen seventy-eight Laguna. And thank you all very much.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I, this coming month, September is or the next month is mine as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So item number five B is consideration of the fall of this year, twenty twenty-three neighborhood cleanup date and locations. So usually, I mean, unless we have locations that we would like to place a box. I usually go through Mr. Soto, our code enforcement officer and get his, his input, but we don't have to do it that way. So first of all, let's, let's go with the dates. And for those of you in the audience who don't know, we, this is a a cleanup event that we do twice a year in the spring and in the fall where green waste donates a, a box and then, or two. Anyway, it's a contract that we have from Green Race. We get a discounted rate on the box and then
A dumpster.
Okay, I guess same, that was me the same thing.
I wouldn't know what a dump.
Dumpster sounds. So dumpster, thank you. And they're, they're placed throughout the city. And it's a chance for the neighborhood just to get rid of things that they've been wanting to get rid of. And this saves them the trip, the trip out to the, out to the dump. So that's what this is all about. And so first of all, let's look at the dates. I just have to say that in October, I will be busy on Saturday, and this is usually a Saturday, on the fourteenth, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. Because I will be attending that cert training, which is offered here on the peninsula, which only happens once a year, if that. So I won't be here those dates.
And I will, I'll be with you.
And, and Joan, you're going to be attending that with me. Good, good. Thank you. So the two of us will be gone those days because it's an all day thing, those three consecutive Saturdays. Does anybody want to propose a date?
I wanted to do the cert too, but I'm, I'm going to be out of state on one of those days in October. So I have to find out if I'll be able to do an alternative date of the cert. And if I can, then I'll be out all those Saturdays as well.
Okay, so it looks like it won't be any of those three Saturdays. There's this. Right, right. Is there a second for Saturday, seven October? Okay, we got, we, we've got him.
I won't be able to do the seventh. I'll be out of, I'll be out of town on the seventh in Santa Maria for a class reunion.
Oh.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, can we do it maybe the last Saturday of September, maybe the thirtieth?
I mean, we've got enough time to, to order the dumpsters. That's not a problem for that. It is the fall.
Or, or even the fourth of November.
Well, what does everybody think? So end of September, early November, which, which works better for everybody? Work it out. And we're looking at it, right? Right. Right, green waste is usually really quick. I mean, that's usually not a problem because I've been, you know, ordering those dumpsters. That's usually not a problem. So so is, is that a motion? Okay. So, well, first of all, we had a motion for, I'm sorry, we had a motion for seven October, so we had to vote on that since it wasn't motion.
Okay.
So all in favor of seven October? Say aye. All opposed? Uh, no. So that's out. And we have an alternate motion for the thirtieth of September. All in favor of the thirtieth of September? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so thirty September it is. And so Jackie, it's going to be thirty September. Can we get some flyers made to show that date? Unusual times, eight thirty to twelve.
We can definitely get the flyers started, but I guess we'll need the locations.
Right, and we can talk about that now. In the past, you know, we've, we've gone through Alfred Little, our, I'm sorry. Soto, our, our co liaison, our code enforcement officer. We haven't always agreed with what he, what he's offered. So let's talk about that here. Where would we like those dumpsters to be set? And they're usually four, usually four or five, five, correct? Mr. Little was usually five, right?
Yeah. So I think Highland Otis was an extremely, a very good location. That dumpster was full and there was still stuff left in the street.
Right. And so, so was it by the dog park, Pachetti Dog Park? That filled up. You know, with, with an hour left to go. So that was very successful there as well. Was there any place that was not successful?
Yes.
That's a tough spot.
But didn't people, because I know some of the people that were at mine, when mine filled, they, I sent them down to yours.
So what, what is making those two that you guys, we had set out there so successful? It, because we go through this every quarter of these flyer things. And in it seems like if there's a lot of apartments, it isn't very successful. I mean, that's what I'm seeing on the boxes I've had, that they're just not that successful. So should we look at a different way of advertising it? Because people aren't getting, getting out there.
I know, I know last, whenever we did it last, was it October?
In the spring.
Or last spring. I know I walked around and did flyers. For as many flyers as I had, I walked around and did flyers. So now I don't know if the people that I did flyers to actually attended. But it's a good location because that Mingo is really busy.
It's traffic.
Yeah.
Too hidden away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
LaSalle was terrific.
Yes.
So who owns the property across the street from the post office? Because that was a gang buster. We did that there. And I know it's probably owned, but they're not doing anything. Maybe we could drop one or two there. Because Alex was one maintaining that one and it was overwhelmed.
Right, and a lot of visibility, a lot of visibility. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have to actually be on, and, and if I remember correctly, it was behind the post office, right? With an Olympia, which people aren't necessarily going to see. If we could put it on.
I don't know what.
That's San Lucas.
Terrace, I believe it's terrace, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it is terrace and Broadway. Oh, you mean right on the street, right there at the, right on the street, right there where the property is, but on the street?
Right.
Yeah, well, I have, I would have a concern, I would have a concern with it being on Broadway because there's so much traffic on Broadway. I think if we were going to put it on a street, it would be the cross street. You know, that, what do we say? That was terrace, right? Yes, on Terrace Street. Because I think that one is, you know, feeder street and it, you know, people could pull off, off the Well, I don't know. What about that next street up? I mean, if we can't put it at the street, that on the lot, what about the next street up?
San Lucas.
San Lucas, yeah, that one.
That's where we put it last time.
Yeah.
There was nothing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The post office there, that road there.
No, I'm talking about, okay, this is, this is Broadway right here. This is San Lucas right here where the stop sign is, and this is Terrace. The post office is right here. I'm talking about putting it right here on the street. So, and I think she was talking about putting it on Broadway right here, right?
Are we talking about the property that's to the east of the post office?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, right across the street.
Okay, yeah, that's, but that's slated for, that's a development site. I, I I don't know. Do that, but I, maybe on the street there.
Right there where the dirty is going into it.
Right.
Put it on the street right there in there.
Well, one of the things is there, there's been problems with that site. That's where people used to dump their Christmas trees and other things.
Yes.
And, and we're trying to encourage people to not bring that side. And I think putting that dumpster or a big rollaway hallway, then my
So, you know, we could have an alternative plan. So, I mean, you know, if Mr. Little thinks that it's not a good idea to put it in that property, then like, you know, I was saying, maybe the street up. So that would be the, you know, not the street that the post office is on, but the next one up, right there on the street. So that people can get to it, but it's not blocking the traffic on Broadway. Yes, it is a four-way stop. It's right catty corner from that little grocery.
All right, leave it San Lucas. So San Lucas, which is still, see, there, a lot of visibility.
Yeah, it is. It is a lot of visibility.
Okay.
And then I was going to suggest Mouse over there in Notre Bena. I was going to ask Dennis if he wanted to hear this.
Dennis?
That's who owns it.
Oh, it would, a Mel's.
Dennis is the owner and put one there. Notre Bena is always busy and that corner is, we could
Actually, that would be a good location.
Right. And if we do that, then it probably wouldn't make a lot of, make, would not make a lot of sense to put one at the, the dog park. It's only a block away. So we would have to, I mean, that's, I think that's a good idea, but we would have to put it somewhere else, then I would think. I mean, they both, but they both still might fill up, but.
But you said it filled up.
It did.
Would there, would there have been enough people that would have filled it up if you would have had two?
I believe so.
So then having it at Mouse and having it at the dog park may not be such a bad idea.
So here's what I have so far. I've got Highland Otis, Terrace and Broadway. Or no, not Terrace and Broadway, where we've changed, San, San Lucas and Broadway. Pachetti Dog Park in the corner and Mouse Markets.
Did you get LaSalle up where I was by the school?
Which one?
LaSalle, by the school, I was up high and it was very popular.
Okay, LaSalle way up high, was that Orte, which was That's five right there.
Yeah, so just in case, there was, there's nothing down here. You know, down on this end of town. So that might be an alternative, like Trinity Park.
Here in the city hall parking lot and it wasn't successful.
No.
Right.
So maybe our neighborhood is neat.
Right, that would put one in, that would put one in. You know, and, and I, I think having one at Mouse Market would, you know, it's I, I, I would say that we could take the one from the dog park and put over to by the tennis courts and that would, you know. That would put one in that area of the city, you know, and then there's one else, market was still, yeah, would still be in that portion of the city.
And where is this? Where, where are you talking about? You said the tennis courts, it's Contra Costa and where? Okay, have we ever had one there historically or have we ever done that?
I don't think so.
So this will be our first.
I believe, right, right. At least plus one in that area.
Yeah, we could decide if that'll work for us. And if it, if it doesn't turn out, then we could decide if we want to do it again, the same spot next time. October, no, uh, spring.
So let me repeat what I have. We've got Highland Otis, San Lucas and Broadway. One in the parking lot of Mouse Market. LaSalle at Orter School or near Orchard School. And then one here on the western side of town, Sonoma in Contra Costa by the basketball courts. So those are the five locations that I've got right now. Okay? Someone want to make that a motion on that?
I make a motion that we go with those locations that Dennis just mentioned.
Okay, and do we have a second? Okay, all in favor of those five locations? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, good. So those are our five locations. Jackie, did you get those or do you want me to repeat those?
Could you repeat them?
I have, I have Highland Otis. I have Orter School, San Lucas and Notre Bena. And then I was missing the other two.
Oh, no, it's not San Lucas and Notre Bena, it's San Lucas and Broadway.
I mean Broadway, I'm sorry. I did right, Broadway, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, with the motion has just been put out there, so we do have to take a vote on it. But just for transparency, our, our chair who's watching from home recalls that one being by the, by the Sonoma Contra Costa in the past was not successful. So, but we, we need, but since this one has already been motioned, and secondly, we need to take a vote on it. And then we can well, we, we could still discuss more, but we still have to take a vote on it.
We have to take a vote to change our, our vote. Okay, so I motioned that due to this latest information from our chair that we retake another vote on the locations of the dumpsters for the fall cleanup. I motion that.
Okay. A second?
I'll second that one too.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. Right, and that would seem to be the place. So, okay. So so Ramona, you're making the motion that we go back and, and put, put it one back near Pachetti Dog Park? Okay.
I second that.
Okay, so the motion is to have the five at Highland Otis, San Lucas and Broadway. One in a, by Mouse Market, LaSalle near Orter School. And then one on the corner of Pachetti Dog Park, which is Notre Bena and Kimball. There's been a motion and a second, all in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, so did you get those five locations, Jackie?
I did, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, good. Okay, well, that's good to know.
Good to know. It is good to know.
Okay, so we're looking at, for just to, just to clear it up, we're looking at September thirtieth, starting at about eight thirty. And then those five locations we just mentioned and we'll, we'll, I, I suppose we can just choose where we're going to flyer. You know, who wants to do what area in those areas as soon as we get the, the flyers ready. Okay, good. Next item is Uh, okay, good. Next item is, um, update our Neighborhood Watch program. So let's start with that, I know that, um, I, I, was the police chief gonna be here and talk about that?
He, he wasn't sure he'd be able to come, but he's, he wanted to relate that he's really interested in it, and also in Yellow Jacket.
Right.
A Yellow Jacket program.
Okay, so, since the chief is not here, 'cause I'd like to hear what he has to say, and you know, how that could benefit, um, the city, or at least, you know, be a backup, how it could benefit the, the police department, I, I'd really like to hear, so I'd like to have a representative from the police department, department to be here, but, since it is on the agenda, does anybody else have anything they wanna say about, uh, Neighborhood Watch? No, okay, so I'd like to re-agendize this again, Jackie, for, um, uh, for, uh, September, and, uh, see if we can get a rep from the, uh, police department here to, to just update us on Neighborhood Watch.
Thank you.
And, uh, so, I'll just talk real quickly about, um, CERTS. Uh, first of all, the way this came about is, um, I, I was talking with some volunteers on the CERT team in Monterey. Monterey has its own CERT team, and so does Carmel, I believe, or Carmel Valley. Um, and they, they do callouts approximately sixteen times a year, so one, you know, one and a quarter or so times a month, and for missing persons, uh, to help traffic control, to help evacuate in times of disaster. And, uh, the original thought was, well, Seaside is the largest, uh, city on the peninsula, population-wise, why doesn't Seaside have its own? And, um, you know, and I, I didn't know where it could be started under, whether it would be started, you know, through a, a commission, I just, you know, it was, it made sense that Seaside would have its own. Uh, but, um, in talks with both, um, the instructor who I'll be meeting, and so will Joan apparently, in a, in another couple of months, we go through training, uh, said that usually, i- it's, it's a national organization, you know, via FEMA after the World Trade Center bombings, uh, and that, uh, it's meant to help, you know, to help the local first responders where they need. And, uh, as I mentioned, it's usually in those, those areas. So, therefore, because of that, normally, a CERT program, that Community Emergency Response Team would be run through the, uh, a, a first responding agency. In our case, that would be the police department or the fire department. And it would have to have a staff member and a budget to oversee it. Um, and at, at this time, in my conversation with the, with, uh, Chief Gutierrez from the police, from the fire department, uh, she'd prefer to take baby steps. And, and that would mean, I, I suppose that we, in our conversation, that would mean to, uh, have as many volunteer, have as many people from Seaside take the training as possible. It's free, uh, it's only once a year, or once every, one and a half years. It's a run-through, re- re- retiree from the Monterey, um, uh, fire department sponsored by FEMA. It's a transferable document, so even if you left the city of Seaside, which we hope you don't, uh, you could become part, you, you would, it would still work someplace else, you'd become part of a CERT team wherever else you would find yourself. Uh, so, that basically is what the update right there, um. We apparently had, we have a CERT program on the books, but it has not been functioning in the last, uh, long time. Uh, the chief is going to look into that and see, you, you know, we, we do have a, you know, have it on the books, there, there was a manager at one time, and, um, it, we just don't have one, we don't have at least a functioning one, so she's going to find out about that and, and get back to me, and, and maybe we can bring it back here and, and talk about it some more. But the discussion that I originally wanted was whether or not we would do that through the NIC, because it sounds like it's a neighborhood function. Um, apparently, that's not the way the, the, the program was written at the national level. So, uh, therefore, I'd like to remove that item for discussion from this evening's agenda, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, based on what I found out and what I just told you. So, does anybody have any questions on, on what the chief, uh, told me? Uh, what I found out from, uh, Mister, his name is Mister Castro, so Demetrius Ca- Castro, who's a retired firefighter from Monterey, who is now, um, contracted through FEMA to, to conduct the trainings. Uh, on that note, there.
More information than what you already gave us?
No, that, that pretty much is it, is that we would, that the city would have to have someone to manage it. And at this time, all the firefighters are pretty busy, uh, but, but the, the chief did kinda hint that it would be a great idea if we had a budget for it, and that would be up to the city council to, you know, appropriate a budget for it, and have someone to manage it, so, you know, once we can, it, you know, hopefully we can get that going at some point, you know, we are the largest, let me give you one example. Twenty years ago, when I was a reserve police officer in, in the city of Seaside, prior to being on the city council, I was still, I was on this commission earlier, um, there was a controlled burn in Fort Or, that's before, that's before, um, uh, General Jim Moore is, the General Jim Moore is today, which is a sm- much smaller road. There was a controlled burn that got out of control a little bit, and it, we, we were afraid it was gonna jump the road and enter into the city of Seaside. Uh, Seaside's fire department was, was positioned where they needed to be, was to help control, you know, get that burn under control, had it jump the fire, uh, jump the road. And all the police officers were called in to help evacuate all those neighborhoods up there by, by the road, um, myself included. So what happened was that all other calls were being put on standby. You, you know, not necessarily the, the dangerous ones, but every other call's been put on standby until we could evacuate all those people up there. My thought, at least now, is why couldn't a CERT team do that? Uh, CERT is still called into Seaside, but it has to go through Monterey first. So I know that our police chief, Orgeas, has called in Monterey CERT team members to help look for missing persons in the city of Seaside, and that's the way it's conducted right now.
So, I, I guess I just have, I thank you for that information, so I just have a, a question of clarification in my mind. So if I were to join the, the, the training and get cer- certified, then I would be on the Monterey.
That's correct.
CERT team.
Right.
And then, if, but if Seaside, could I specify that I only wanted to be called for Mon- for Seaside i- situations, or would I have to go for just Monterey situations?
No, no, you could specify that, as I understand that, um, and anybody who's on the, is basically, it's, it's, it's a peninsula CERT team right now, but it's managed by Monterey, someone in the city of Monterey managed it. And when there's a call out, as there has been in Seaside several times the past year, um, for missing persons, then our chief or, uh, someone from our police department calls Monterey CERT, calls that manager, and then they dispatch, they, they deploy those volunteers into Seaside. That's, that's how it works. Sure, you can, you can specify that you wanna only do Seaside.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Is there, since we have a councilman person, is there a reason why Seaside hasn't done this? Is it because of the money, the funds? Or? Do you have any idea?
I forgot. The, the parts you gotta have invented, uh, and to reenter that, uh, with a bunch of. And this mentioned, um, so, as I've budgeted, I've got, I've seen anything about that, you know, about, either for that.
So, um, you know, the, in the, the chief's words were, the, the, you know, let's take baby steps, let's try to get as many people, um, trained in the city of Seaside who would like to be, you know, at least on a larger CERT team, and in the future, we'll look at and, and see whether or not it would be appropriate to have, uh, uh, Seaside's own CERT team. Okay, so with that, I would like to, uh, mention to the public, and, um, to my fellow commissioners here, and anybody in the, in the audience right now, that as, as I said earlier, the next training is going to be October fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth, those are three consecutive Saturdays, and they're from eight AM to five thirty PM, so they're long, they're gonna be long days, three Saturdays in a row. Uh, but after that, they're only quarterly trainings. And, um, um, so that's not a whole lot, quarterly trainings, and, uh, then you're, you're cer- certified, and that's, uh, you get sworn in, it's a national organization. And if you are interested, all you have to do is send an email, an email of interest to Again, that's training@monterreycert.org. And, uh, just an email on interest, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, Mister Castro's, who's the, uh, trainer, would get back to you, so he told me. Okay, any other questions, folks? Okay, good, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to, um, alright, here we go, we're, uh, uh, let me give some little bit of background information on the next one, five D, which is Continued Consideration of Upcoming Projects for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four. And, um, the city council recently appropriated to, as, as a stewards, uh, of this fund for community projects, the, uh, to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, an amount of approximately four hundred thousand dollars to work with other commissions, other groups, to better the city, and, you know, is a, is it a, as an umbrella term. And, uh, we had decided that tonight and our next meeting, which, uh, would be September fifth, we would hear presentations from those groups, or there'd be other commissions in the city, or other groups that work within the city. And, uh, that's what we're going to do now, and, uh, talk anything else that, uh, would need to be. But this is the item right here, where we will hear, uh, under which we will hear presentations. And I see, uh, Bobby, are you the one that's going to be, okay, so, oh, alright. So you folks, uh, if you're ready, come on up.
I, I prepared a PowerPoint, but it doesn't look like. There's no, no one here. Uh, is she in the building?
No, uh, I don't know where she found him.
Oh. If I can get it to her, then I know.
Jackie, is there any way that, um, this presenter can present her, uh, her, uh, briefing on PowerPoint? Her PowerPoint briefing?
I would have been able to present if I had the PowerPoint prior to, then I could have put it up on the screens. But I, I don't see that anybody's there to be able to take the PowerPoint and put it up for you. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Okay.
If you have hard, if you have hard copies, we can, you know, you want, you're gonna pass them through and, or, or.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the audience can't see that, but.
Alright, I don't have two copies of it, or I would do that. I'm sorry to be prepa- unprepared for this situation here. My, I'm Catherine Crockett, and I'm with, um, Sustainable Seaside, I'm the chair. And I really appreciate the commissioners for inviting us to participate in these, uh, proposals, so, um, okay, I will just, um, may I just go through it and then pr- present you with the, uh, presentation here? Alright, uh, we have four, four proposals. The first one is install a water fountain bottle refill station at Capra Park. And, uh, the second one, improve the Linear Park along General Jim Moore Boulevard, um, which runs between Co Avenue and Hillby, and that's actually three segments there, uh, approximately half-mile segments. We were proposing one of those segments be, uh, improved. Uh, number three, add three new picnic areas at Cuttino Park. And number four, install bicycle racks at various seaside locations. So, um, number one, water fountain bottle refill station at Capra Park. Uh, the, the park has, is frequently used, it has a barbecue grill and, and half basketball court. And, um, this one park has a master plan, park master plan. And I spoke with some of the FOSPA people who work in that park and who are very familiar with that plan, and and they say that this, uh, putting a, a bottle refill station there is, would not conflict with the plans, because, um, the, the, the improvements are gonna be in the lower level, it's a, it's a two-level park. And so this is proposed for the upper level, there's already a dog station there, you know, with, um, um, bags, and, um, I have photos here, so you, you'll be able to see the location that, that was discussed, and of course, any, any, um, a- a- any, if this is implemented, it would be, you know, subject to FOSPA, some of the people who are overseeing that park right now. So, um, there's already a par- a, a refilled water bottle refill station at Laguna Grande Park and at Cuttino Park. And those are purchased by the city, it's called Most Dependable Brand, uh, outdoor drinking fountains, and each unit sells for about five thousand dollars. And, uh, with the prep work, installation and all, that, that would be, um, approx- another fifteen thousand, so we're saying approximately twenty thousand dollars. A, a total estimate of twenty thousand dollars. Okay, number two, the second.
Excuse me one second, what did that twenty thousand dollars cover? You said installation and the one?
The unit itself is five thousand dollars. And, uh, the prep and installation is, uh, approximately fifteen thousand dollars. I spoke with Dave Fortune, with Public Works, and that was his best guess. N- knowing that there are some unknown factors that, you know, have to be taken into consideration. But that is a rough estimate, uh, twenty thousand dollars per unit for, for this one that we're proposing. Capra Park. Alright, and now the second one is a, this is a larger project, it's the Linear Park along Jim Moore Boulevard, and, and this would increase options for outdoor recreation and improve accessibility. And we're, what we're proposing is leveling and stabilizing the path that's there now, with decomposed granite, and, um, clearing the overgr- over, overgrown trees and shrubs. I don't wanna get these out of order. So this is an undeveloped stretch of land, it's adjacent to the residential area along Jim Moore Boulevard, bounded by Co and Hillby, it stretches about one point three miles from Kobe to Hillby. Uh, has a variety of surfaces that are uneven and unsafe, uh, the width varies from forty feet to ten feet, and, um, I mentioned the trees and shrubs are, are, are a bit overgrown in some sections of it. So this is already used as a provisional, uh, trail for walking and biking. And, um, it's a potential recreation area, it's already used, I live very close to it, I see people uh, morning, afternoon, and evening, and, um, the, the, one, uh, thing about this is that could be done incrementally, you could do, you know, level the path in one section of it, and then later add amenities like benches or, or, uh, a station area, uh, exercise, uh, station. And so I have floaters here, which I'll pass around. So the estimated cost, uh, the pathway, one section of it, like between San Pablo and, and Hillby, which has the best view of the whole trail, um, is about, uh, twenty-one feet by six feet, or twelve hundred six, twelve thousand six hundred square feet. And I talked with one, uh, this is my best effort here at a cost, with, with, um, a supplier of decomposed granite. And, uh, it would take a hundred and twenty-six tons of California Gold at seventy-two dollars a ton, which comes to about ninety thousand, and then, um, I looked at a couple of other projects, I, I spoke with our, um, city engineer, uh, Miss, Miss Patel, and she said it would take some time to get the pricing, the cost estimate on this, so I, I went out and found a couple of similar, similar projects. Uh, one in Pacific Grove, the Point Pinus two thousand twenty-two, uh, Point Pinus Improvement Project, that was one point eight mile pathway improvement, and that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then there's a Prisker Park Improvement Project, that's an eight-point-five mile pathway, and they just put out bids in March uh, for that work, and it was between eighty thousand and a hundred and ten thousand. So that's very rough, but.
I have a question, so you said the eight point five, that's about half of what you're proposing, that.
That's a double.
That's, uh, that was double, uh, yeah, that's what I meant, so the amount that you were wanting to do is half of that eight point five, so we could consider maybe half of that cost, which was eighty thousand? Okay.
These are rough, you, you can look at my work here, it's, it's the best I could do for the amount of time and city resources, so.
And Mister Crockett, I've got a question as well, so the, the, the leveling is the pro- proposal, and also the, um, the, um, uh, right, not, not just keeping a dirt, but, but filling in, that's the proposal?
Mm-hmm.
Or making, you know, har- hard, making it hard, uh.
Stabilizing it, and, and, oh, um, I have quite a few, well, I have several photos, um, included here, you can see the rough places where there's ice plant erosion, you know, it's pitted in some places. But you can also see how beautiful it is right now, even with nothing, a lot of people use it. So. Um, alright, then, the nu- the third project is something I discussed, discussed with our, um, city engineer, Nishel Patel. And, um, this is directing seven. And um, this is directing seventy thousand dollars to the Cutino Park Improvement Project. Right now, there's um, you know, there's budgeted money for twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four for a project, improvement project. It only includes one picnic area, but they, you know, the long-term goal is to get three more. And um, there would be some savings of about twenty thousand dollars for the city if they went ahead and did a, a, a change order to the current um, contract and added these three new picnic tables. This would be additional picnic areas as um, a gathering place for youth, the people, usually mostly the kids from the Boys and Girls Club. And it would be a safe place for them to congregate and have lunch and there's no safe place currently right now for them. So then um, yeah.
Is that seventy-five for the three picnic tables?
Yes.
Why are they so expensive?
Um, I don't have that information. I, I could talk to our city planner. I don't, I don't know that. No, there, there's one that's included in the current uh, plan, improvement plan for twenty-three, twenty-four budget, just one. But they want to have four ultimately. They want to have a, a gathering place for the young people. And they could use it for birthday parties and.
And altogether, all four would be approximately, or the estimation is seventy.
An additional seventy thousand dollars. And according to uh, Ms. Patel, putting it out for bid again would be costly and, and the cost of material and everything else. It could even be more than twenty thousand, but that was her, her best uh, estimate.
So just wanted to make sure, all four, seventy thousand dollars?
Yes. A change order to add three more would be seventy thousand dollars. Okay, and the fourth one, the last one is um, installing bicycle, bicycle racks at various locations. Someone in our group came, found this website that has bicycle racks that are themed. And I don't know if you can see this. It's, it's, it's a fish. It's, it's a blue fish. It's a tuna. They call this one the tuna. So you know, bikes, uh, this could be a form of art, artistic expression. And they have octopuses and um, birds, all different kinds of things. They have an aquatic theme. Uh, we, we currently have bike racks installed here at City Hall and also in Cutino Park and, and they're very nondescript. They're purely functional. But um, that's just to say that, you know, it could be fun and colorful and encourage people to ride their bicycles. So we were suggested, some of the suggested locations are Old Meyer Center, the Seaside Library, Petullo Swim Center, Cutino Park, or City Hall. Even though they have, you know, functional bike racks, these, these are fun and uh, could add some character and appeal to our parks and especially among our youth, um, to create a bike-friendly atmosphere here in seaside. And that's, you know, sustainable seaside. That's one of our goals to make, uh, to offer active transportation options and promote them. And um, and it's been shown that installing bike racks is, improves economic vitality for cities and businesses. I have a study mentioned here. So uh, again, I spoke with uh, Dave Fortune about the cost of installing these. They're roughly a ten thousand dollars each. And these, these bike racks, these themed bike racks from a company named Mad Racks, M A D R A X. They range in price from four thousand to fourteen thousand. But so that's my presentation and I will leave you with this um, printed uh, version of this.
Um, thank you, thinking it's Crockett. Are there any questions besides what has already been asked? From Miss Crockett? Yeah, Sustainable Seaside. No? Okay. Um, I've got one, if you don't mind. Yes, real quick, because I need to get in here. How many bicycle racks? Was it four?
We were just proposing, putting it on the table. One or more, you know, if we could get several of them, then we have a theme going.
And each one was, was how much?
Well, the prices vary from uh, four thousand, these themed uh, bicycle racks to fourteen thousand. The octopus, you know, with the arms, that's, that's the most expensive. That one's fourteen thousand. But there um, they have quite a few that are, are attractive, even if you don't go with a theme. There are some more colorful, some more interesting, something you might see down on Broadway, those uh, round bicycle racks, just something that's more appealing.
So that's, that's quite a range. Um, so just for the purposes of our discussion, because we, we eventually, we're going to have to discuss this. Uh, can we, can we use an average of nine thousand since that's where that would fall between these two?
That would be.
For, for four of them. We have thirty-six, approximately thirty-six thousand, if you, you know.
That's. That seems like a fair estimate. Ten thousand each.
Ten thousand each was the installation?
Yes.
So it would be the installation, ten thousand plus the, the cost of the actual rack. So if it was four thousand, it would be fourteen thousand. Okay.
Um, it, I'm sorry, my, my hearing is not, for the, the path leveling, that estimate was, was it eight thousand or?
It was a broad, yeah, between eight thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand. No, no, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, okay, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. A hundred and eighty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand was the range that, that I gave.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are there any other questions for Sustainable Seaside?
Oh, I did have, I did think of something. So how would we determine, who would determine the themes? You know, like you said that there was an octopus and I think the one picture you showed was a fish.
Yes.
Who would make that determination? Would you, would that be your committee or would that?
We would be happy.
Who would that, who would, I mean, who would propose the designs? How would we get those?
Our thought was the, and I see the commissioners would, would decide to make that uh, decision. We would be happy to participate. And we've actually given some here in photos that, that would be pretty much what we're proposing. But we know some of them are quite expensive.
So can we only go with the ones that you have pictured or could we do a custom one?
Well, the custom uh, bike racks, we looked into that. They are very expensive. They have themed uh, that are part of their in inventory. And then they have custom, which are pricey, very pricey. And I don't, and I think someone even said they're not making them right now because of demand or materials or something.
So was there a seahorse amongst any of those?
Like on. No, that's what we, that's why we were looking at the custom uh, uh, bike racks to see if we could get one, but they, they told us, for some reason, they're not doing custom bike racks right now, which not to say some other company wouldn't.
And did you have a catalog of all the different themes or the, all the different characters that we could look at?
Um, I can send a link. I can follow up with uh, you know, send a digital copy of my PowerPoint and include that.
I would like to. If, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Um, those locations you named, are we replacing the racks that are already there? Or, or uh, I mean, I'm just looking at the money wise, uh, why spend nineteen thousand dollars if there's already a rack there? I mean.
But it's, Cutino Park and City Hall have them already. But if you were going for a theme, if we wanted to have a theme throughout the city at the public buildings, that's the only reason we, we mentioned it.
Okay.
Because, yes, you're right. We do have those in existence right now.
Does anybody from the public have any questions for Sustainable Seaside on this item? Yes.
I wondered if the water.
You can come to the mic, please.
Linda Cunningham, as a citizen, not as a committee member, um, for the homelessness committee. I just wondered if the drinking fountain, the bottle filler also has a little uh, dog water at the bottom. Um, some fountains do have a little dog fountain at the bottom and I just be nice if there was water for the dog. And I, and I really love the idea of working on that long park at the top. Could you imagine if that was a beautiful park? Um, anyhow.
Thank you for that question. Um, no, the, the, the water fountains that we're proposing are the ones that the city has already purchased in, for Cutino Park and um, over in Laguna Grande Park. We just went with that because it's, it's, seems to be working. It's a, it's a, it's got the water refill. It has the handicap accessible and then uh, just the regular water fountain. So we went with that.
I did have one more question on the racks. I'm sorry. Um, that was a good question, Dennis. Um, does that mean that we would be replacing those racks? And would we be able to place those old racks somewhere else and reuse them? I mean, do, did you have a plan on that?
Uh, no, no, we, we, we did not get that specific. We just wanted to see, um, you know, take an inventory to see what is existing today. And I, I have pictures of those here. Um, um, they're, you know, practical, they, they can be used. But we were just going for a theme, something that would just sort of give seaside some flavor of being a bike city.
Yeah, some character, I guess. Um, and then, um, thank you, Linda, for that question. Um, I was wondering on that, is that filtered water on that water thing? It's filtered, right?
It is drinking water. I was um, told that there has to be a water main, a, a water main connection in the park and, you know, to get the drinking water. And there uh, must also be um, an outflow. Uh, they'll have to build a sump and there has to be, uh, yeah, something to return the water, the, you know, the used water. So that, that's why it's so expensive.
And it, it's not right. It's near the, the waste disposal for the dog waste, but it's, how, how, how close is it to that?
Um, you'll be able to see a picture here because I, I took pictures of it. It's, it's an area about maybe as big as this right here. Sorry. And it, the dog station is here and uh, we're proposing it all over here on the other side of.
About, about four feet?
At, at least, that sounds about, at least four feet.
Just as an FYI, um, Nick proposed those water uh, faucets for um, Cutino Laguna Grande, the ones that we have now. I think SOPA, we did and that it went through. I don't know if uh, SOPA got it, but Laguna, they got, yeah. So they're the only ones that had water. So it went through the council to approve it. So thank you for those suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, Jackie, is there anybody um, virtually who has any questions for uh, Sustainable Seaside?
I do have a hand up. One sec.
Okay. It sounds like you have one more question.
And hi, uh, my name is Rachel Christopherson. I'm also a member of the Friends of Seaside Park. And I just wanted to say thank you so much, Catherine, for, and all of um, Sustainable Seaside for putting that together. That was really, really helpful and just wanted to say thank you to all of you um, serving voluntarily on this Neighborhood Improvement Commission. I think it's what makes seaside great. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, are there any others, any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crockett. Thank you so much. And thank, and thanks for, from us to Sustainable Seaside. Again, the process is going to be, we, we, we have one more, well, at least one more. We, we could do uh, uh, emergency meetings if need be, if someone can't make it, you know, to tonight or next month. But um, you know, then we discuss it after next month and, you know, getting, beginning information out. All right, looks like Park and Rec is here for their presentation. Come on up, Bobby. And if uh, go to introduce yourself and uh, let us hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Chair Alexander and fellow commissioners. I'm Bobby Maxwell and I'm the vice chairperson for the Parks and Rec Commission. And I'm going to start off by saying that we always have a work plan, an annual work plan that we work on. And for the years that I've been involved, at least, we list our goals and objectives and uh, priority rankings. And one of our really highest uh, priorities is to work cooperatively with uh, the different commissions, including NIC and FOSPA. And then the Art and History Commission and the Environmental Commission. And that is the priority ranking of high. So that being said, we on our commission have uh, prioritized three projects that we'd like to for you to consider. Um, number one is Highland Otis Park. And the approximate improvement cost for that is around twenty thousand dollars. And I'll just read this and then I'll, and then I'll leave this with you when I'm done. Um, currently, there is not an appropriate safe volleyball play surface or court parameters with the volleyball net located in this park. The volleyball court play surface improvement would include to level the surface, put a frame around the court and add new sand appropriate for sand volleyball play. Okay, and our next uh, priority item is to plant trees. And there are two options to that because we, in the past couple of years, have had uh, uh, funds uh, given by this commission to our commission for use for purchasing trees to plant in parks. In twenty twenty-one, uh, the NIC Commission uh, gave us four thousand dollars for purchasing trees. And then approximately twenty-five native trees and tree-like shrubs were planted by FOSPA Park stewards and other uh, dedicated stewards. And the approximate cost of that amount of trees, twenty-five to thirty native trees was forty-five hundred dollars. And the second part of this tree planting thing was um, last year, uh, we were given ten thousand dollars from NIC Commission for a tree project uh, giveaway program. And over a hundred and twenty-five uh, native or fruit trees were distributed to residents who qualified to receive a tree voucher to be redeemed at Hana Gardens in Seaside. The approximate cost for that was ten thousand dollars. And then the third item that I'm bringing to your attention is the Wheeler Street Tennis Courts. And um, we have done some investigation into the cost of that. And I've heard some different stuff from our staff, but I'm just going to read what I have written down here. The approximate cost of that project would be seventy-two thousand dollars, which would include labor and materials. Um, the tennis courts are in serious need of resurfacing and relining. And pickleball is being played there as well, which, which actually is uh, the the fastest growing sport in the United States. And we were uh, proposing to have the tennis courts resurfaced and dedicating two courts to just tennis courts only. And then the other two courts, because they're right now, it's a total of four tennis courts. The other two tennis courts would be uh, committed to for pickleball courts because those courts are smaller in size. Um, so it would be resurfacing the uh, the surfaces of the courts and, and relining it for the two tennis courts and then for pickleball courts. And the cost for that is, like I said, seventy-two thousand dollars. So, and that's it for my presentation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Before asking my fellow commissioners if they have questions, I just want to clarify something. When, when you stepped up to the uh, to the uh, dais, I, or, or the mic, I thought I heard you say that all three or the uh, they were going to be under Highland Otis, but it's just a volleyball court. You're asking for Highland Otis. And the trees are for citywide or just for?
No, the trees are citywide because the tree program was citywide. And like I said, there was a, a hundred and twenty-five residents that applied to get the vouchers. And they did that and planted trees in their property.
And that was twenty-five to thirty trees for a total of forty-five hundred?
That, yes. That was, I'll, I'll say that's option A. Or two A. And then two B would be the other tree program, which was ten thousand dollars.
Okay, got it.
Um, just as FYI for the tree program, you know, the uh, city came out with a newsletter and I just pulled it up to make sure. But it said that there's a tree giveaway going on right now. So it sounds as if the city's already sponsoring it. Think about that?
No, it, the tree program from this year ended in June.
Yeah, well, why would?
I don't know why. I don't know. I'm not in charge of that website and all that stuff.
That's all. There's still some left. So they've, they're just a few.
Yeah.
So that's why it's still.
Last I heard, there wasn't any trees left.
So that would, that's the update.
I had a kind of a confrontation with.
I know that Dan Mewes would be the one to find out that information from.
Just as a personal information, I went to Hana Gardens to get my keys. I had my certificate, but I went the day after. I went on October first, I believe. And they said they couldn't give it to me because the tree program was over. So they had to get permission from the city. So they did indeed go to the city and following workday or whenever it happened and they allowed a tree. But anyways, I'd like to know more about this tree giveaway that the city just sent out.
So would I.
Might be different.
Good question.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Yes.
I would like to know more about pickleball. It, like you said, it is the fastest growing. And it's for, for the young, but also for the seniors. And um, from what I've uh, took a little survey in my little neighborhood and everything, no one's playing tennis, pardon me. It's all pickleball. And if you go to Big Five and ask them, what are they selling? They're not selling tennis rackets anymore. They're selling pickleball uh, rackets and all that stuff. I've never played the sport, but it looks like fun. So could we convert more into pickleballs so we could start ramping up like everybody else is? I mean.
Uh, that was, oh, excuse me. That, that was our intention was to leave two tennis courts for tennis. Because it is tennis court and, and uh, Coach Brooks teaches tennis on those courts.
Who's Coach Brooks?
Um, he's been there forever. I don't know his. And uh, in the rec department and that, doing that program. Yeah. Yeah. And it's in one of the acti, it's in the activity books for the uh, recreation department. So.
Does he need two courts? Could he just?
I don't know. I, I haven't talked to him, but I know that tennis, I mean, he still does teach the, the stuff.
The volleyball, I mean, is there abundance of people going playing volleyball? Because, I mean, we quite a few people play volleyball. I do, I'm pushing pickleball because we're behind the eight ball on this right now.
Exactly.
It seems. And uh, the more pickleballs we get out there, I think more seniors we get out there and play it. Uh, I know some are driving to San Jose to play on their courts down there.
I do know that Highland Otis is a well-used park. And the reason being why there's no volleyball, because it's unsafe. This, the, the ground that's on there now is really unsafe to play on. So, I mean, if there was an, a bordered out court with new sand that was clean, I'm sure people would be there playing. I'm sure there would be.
There is a suggestion to have Granite donate that.
Exactly. That's, that's in the works too. Yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Maxwell, I, I hear my fellow commissioner here saying, and um, well, we can only go based on your recommendation, you know, when we start discussing this. Would, would Parks and Rec be willing to amend the recommendation to include more pickleball?
Sure. And that would be like not really up to us because we'd have to do a, a community uh, special meeting or something to see the interest in it and all that kind of stuff and get community input. And then ultimately, it's up to the council to decide if that can happen or not. So it's just an idea.
I, I did have a, another question. Has the, have they talked to any of the residents around there? Because I seem to recall reading an article in the Weekly about residents near Wheeler, the Wheeler Courts, and they were complaining about the sound of all the pickleball.
There's only one, there's only one resident that has ever complained about that pickleball being there.
So there won't be an issue with that then?
No, I'd believe not.
Okay.
I live four houses down from that tennis court. And if you have, don't know about people playing pickleball, you can just visit there on every day. And they have a lot of people playing pickleball. So if it, it's being served very well. I don't know why anyone goes to San Jose. It's pickleball sitting right there, pickleball court there.
Well, it's, it's waiting.
There is no waiting.
Well, when they've gone there. I, I don't know. I've never played the game. I don't know, but I'm just saying.
Just, they do go to San Jose for tournaments. It's a, it's a tournament.
Because they won't allow tournaments at, in, at that area.
So I've, I've heard that also about the noise, the noise level in, but in your opinion, Ramona, that's not, hasn't been a problem in you live in that neighborhood?
No, and the gentleman that Mr. Maxwell is speaking uh, didn't really complain about the noise. It was just that.
Anything else, the garbage, the parking, the whatever, vandalism, you name it. Yes.
Right.
Tennis too. I might add, uh, Brooks is there, his tennis team all the time coaching.
And I guess, are they using both courts?
Yeah, all four courts are being used.
Right now. Oh, I see. The courts that are there now are being used. Where is the pickleball being played then?
The two front ones are pickleball and the back ones are tennis. However, no one's playing pickleball there because they have certain times that clubs come in and play. Programs come in and play. You can, like my other neighbor, she could just look up there with her husband and play. And she goes up there and plays with him during off time. Just as anyone would go there any time they want.
So why can't the court be used for dual purpose? Why can't a tennis court be used for a pickleball as well?
It, it is at this time.
So why couldn't all the courts be either tennis or pickleball?
Well, for one thing, the, the net is different. They're, they're doing it because that's all there is. But in a really uh, uh, true pickleball court, the net is different than the volley, I mean, the uh, tennis net. It is. The court's smaller and, and the net's different. It is.
Changed. I don't know if the back.
I believe they bring the wrong nets. Tennis group, the set tennis. The net all is smaller. Uh, smaller thing, that's why the seniors are so uh, favorable for. They could, a little bit is far left.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's another point that the noise is not a fact. It's not, the noise is, it's elevated twenty, thirty feet. So you barely hear a little hit. Uh, the problem is, as I said two days ago, there are two neighbors and actually uh, or a three neighbor actually, um, is the parking. They, they don't like, the three neighbors don't like outside people coming, playing in the park because it impacts the local, the damage to roads, etc. I'm not saying I agree, not even, I'm just saying that's.
Their argument.
That's their argument is it's not meant for cars to be there from outer town people that come and play. That's their opinion, not necessarily your mind. So those are the things that different net is brought in by, by the team, that's such or the the group, there's a large pickleball association that's that travel, I guess, the different areas based on availability. As well, and knowing they're not pickleball there and they just the tennis lines, they just use uh, the tennis net and you wear a
Is there other pickleballs courts in Seaside or?
No, that's it.
That's, that's all we have.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be.
Here with the school district, as far as lining some of their tennis courts at the school. The problem being is, then you got to bring the net, potentially if you want to play legally some good courts. And then it does, can't do what you suggested, do the tennis lines. Then internally making this a yellow, yellow lines for the pickleball court with a seven, eight, nine.
Well, I appreciate that, Dave. And that's what I'm saying is why couldn't they do that with all the courts and then even have alternate days? Like on Monday, Wednesday and Friday is tennis. And then on Tuesday and Thursday, it's pickleball in those tennis areas or something, you know? It would be nice if we could get on the pickleball circuit, you know?
But bottom line is whether we do the four pickleball courts and tennis court block, the surface needs to be redone.
Got it.
It's in bad shape. So. Anyway.
And I just, you know, just add about, about the parking issue. Parking has been a problem in Seaside since Columbus line on our shores. So it's, you know, that's, that's just goes everywhere in the city. So I, I don't want that to tamper this, our thought process in this specifically. That's always been a problem throughout the city. Uh, even when it's not been a problem, it has been a problem. So, um, yeah, so uh, are there any questions for Mr. Maxwell?
No. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave this with you.
Okay. Are there questions from the public for Parks and Rec? Oh, good, Mr. Little? Go ahead and let's go with um, the virtual questions first and then whilst the, 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 the present public. So um, person on Zoom who's got a question, go ahead and please identify yourself.
I didn't have a comment.
Hello, Mr. Miller. Go ahead with your question, please.
No, I have no comment. My hand's not raised, so I'm just watching the show.
Okay, so there's no other questions from uh, from virtuosity, virtual public?
I have one last question.
Okay, go ahead, Ray.
Do you have any idea what it costs to go from ground up to put in a pickleball court?
No, I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
Did you get that?
I probably could. So.
Well, are there, excuse me, are there any questions from our um, present public who, uh, for Parks and Rec? Linda, go ahead.
Once again, private citizen, not homelessness committee member. I wondered if the court has a bike rack? If parking's a problem, maybe they need a bike rack. Nobody sees the humor in that. Okay. Uh, forget that. That would be funny because we talked about bike racks earlier. Yeah. Um, and then um, there, I, I live by Mets Park and when I walk by that park, um, behind the baseball fence is this undeveloped area. I thought it'd be great for a bike pump park. Uh, there's also a little neglected area behind the barely ever used basketball court um, that I thought could be for little kids on a bike, but uh, that also undeveloped area could be great for uh, these uh, ground up pickleball courts. Um, just because it's like an unused area. I mean, how many times the baseball going over there? Maybe you could say, don't play pickleball when you're playing baseball. But normally during the day, there isn't a lot of baseball going on. When older people who have retired from work might be wanting to play pickleball. I think they could share that space. Does this suggestion as a place in the city where you could put some pickleball courts or bike pump? So kids have somewhere to ride their bike. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, Mr. Maxwell, I want to thank you and your commission, Parks and Rec Commission. Um, and again, the, the process, as you well know, is that we're going to, to give um, the opportunity next month, which I believe is September fifth, our September meeting for other groups or commissions to present. And then um, in um, between that time in, in today, if there is a, a group that needs to um, present to us on a special basis, we'll consider that. And then after that, we'll start um, doing our conversations and, and let you know. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, very good presentations. Thank, thank you um, all. Okay, and again, we'll, we're going to be considering or, or receiving presentations at our September meeting, which is the first Tuesday, September, which I believe is the fifth. All right, let's go to our next item. Item number six, reports from commissioners. Let's go ahead and we'll start to my right here. Ramona, or do you have anything?
Um, I just wanted to remind the commission um, that we have not been doing the business of the quarter. So we need to get that going. Every quarter, we nominate a business. And we have not been doing that since calendar years Jan, January one. So maybe we should, since we overlook that and have a lot on our agendas lately, maybe we should reduce that to uh, to annually instead of quarterly. And that, and I know maybe we should put that on the agenda to relook at our home of the month and look at our business of the quarter. I'd like to have that on the agenda. I'll email it to Jacqueline.
Okay. Um, Jackie, she's, um, Ramona's going to email you. She's to place them. Okay. Okay, um, so she'll email you, but uh, the request is for our next agenda to have um, studying whether or not we should have uh, business of the quarter or uh, biannual uh, business reward. Okay, um, Ray? Nothing.
Tiffany.
Tiffany, thank you. I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to tell the community that um, the Neighborhood Improvement Commission attended the um, National Night Out. Thank you, Joan. I had a, a, a senior moment. National Night Out. Um, I thought it was a success, but it would have been nice if we had had um, better, um, if we would have had any little tchotchkes to give out or, and then our banners were a little bit out of date. If we had had some updated banners, um, we didn't have very many people come to our table, but you know, this was the first time that I know of. And so I, I hope that we will continue to do that. But it was good. We were all there except for, uh, Ray couldn't make it. Um, but we were all there and uh, it was a, I think it was a successful event. So um, I was glad that we were able to attend.
And thanks to Jackie for getting the table out and tablecloth and all of that, or Mr. Little or your team or however, however it was done, it was there when I got there.
Yeah, it was Jackie. So thank you, Jackie. And also thank uh, to our commit, our uh, our uh, chair for the new name tags. They're groovy.
Right, yes.
And the city for providing those, Jackie.
You got some swag. Okay, thank you. Joan, do you have anything to comment on?
I do. Uh, a piggybacking on, on National Day Out. Um, I had two people talk about, is there any way we can have volunteer days to clean up peoples? People who need help with their yards. It was something that I had brought up before to see if we could do that. And two people asked, they love the park, they love FOSPA and going out. And two people asked, they love the park, they love FOSPA and going out and helping in the parks. And they wondered if we could do something like that for yards. I think they had, both of them had elderly neighbors, you know, and they knew that people need help. Just if we could organize some volunteer day, I just thought that was a nice comment. And then I have something else, and that's Blues in the Park is just the most fantastic event, and I hope it lasts, it goes on forever. And I I was at a booth there, so a lot of people talked to us about how great Seaside is, putting on all these free things. I mean, it 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 expands in people's minds when they're at a great event like that with good music, they were just thrilled. Everyone I talked to, so. Yay, Seaside.
Thank you, Joan, I just want to comment on your your first item, and that's the cleanup in a in a in a private neighborhood, we we'll have to find out from the city attorney about that exactly what that is, because we are a public agency working. So we used to do things like that, but we weren't the lead agencies, I used to be on a na- on a nonprofit board called Rebuilding Together, which we did things like that, sort of like Habitat Humanity, but that was the lead agency in which NIC would help them with it. But if we were to be the lead agency, we'd just have to find out whether or not we could do that rather than public, you know, public grounds, which we are able to being on a private, private property, doing that for a specific individual, we just have the chance with that, okay? Okay, and I just want to mention that you know, we are the 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 city is still, even though we had our one smoke alarm installation day a few months ago, that you know, we are, we could still do on an individual basis, since we we the the NIC adopted as a project, we can still do free smoke alarm installations, working with the Red Cross. And just you can, you know, let let the city know and they'll let me know and I'll come out and and put a free smoke alarm in for and you know, I still one of our ongoing projects with working with the Red Cross. Okay, Mr. Little, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, well, I have one question. The council meeting that is scheduled for August 17th, we're going to be with June and July, also on my presentation, and so I just want to know which legislature will be present.
Those were mine, you saw me there.
August 17th, okay. Would those be the only two items we would have on that? On that for that meeting? Just the Okay, for, so that's a special meeting, August 7th?
Oh, it's the city council.
Oh, city council meeting, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Little, okay, and you're, Ramona, you're gonna be there, okay, good, thank you.
Start at 5 o'clock now. Did they change the time?
What? Okay. And then there are no other, no other items on the agenda, so entertain the motion to adjourn.
Hi.
I have motion that we adjourn this meeting.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you.